Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special municipal advisory, Springs Municipal Advisory Council meeting for January 12th, 6:00 PM. Our goal tonight is to craft a letter to the Board of Supervisors about the SDC proposals. The way this meeting will run this evening is we will take public comment on things not on the agenda. Then we will read through the letter. As is, we have taken all the ideas we've heard and plopped them into the letter. We will take public comment again. And then at the, and then we will go through the letter and make, have, we will vote on the various sections of the letter as we make decisions about what we're including. Hannah, did you have a question?
Yeah, the chat needs to be turned off. If it's not being, it looks like it's not off.
Thank you. I was working on that, Hannah.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So Ray is not here, so I'm going to call the roll. Council member Goldman.
Here.
Council member Lombard.
Here.
Council member Parrot.
Here, thank you.
Council member Reyes. Council member Alcaraz. Council member Willet. Is here, I see him.
If I made territory, we do need to make the announcement for Spanish interpretation as well.
You want to do that?
Gracias. Bienvenidos. Esta es la reunión del Consejo Municipal de Springs. Y esta reunión cuenta con interpretación al español para acceder a la interpretación. Por favor de hacer clic en el icono global a la parte baja a la derecha de su pantalla. Seleccione español o Spanish y automáticamente escuchará esta reunión en español. Para el comentario público también, por favor de utilizar la aplicación de levantar mano o raise hand. Y será otorgado el permiso para hacer su comentario si lo desea hacer en español, lo puede hacer. Y si está llamando, por favor de oprimir estrella nueve. Gracias. Thank you, territory.
Thank you. All right. So just a reminder, I want to thank our interpretation services, Juan Morales, Lynn Marie for taking notes, Supervisor Goran's office, and Katrina and KSVY for their ongoing support. So thank you all. We will take public comment now on things not on the agenda.
Territory and how much time allocated for this?
Ninety seconds.
Thank you. For those members of the public who wish to make a public comment, please use the raised hand feature. You will be acknowledged and allowed to make your comment. Make sure you state your name for the record. I don't see any raised hands, territory.
Great. All right. Thank you. Okay, so again, just a reminder of this process. I'm going to read through the letter. We have everybody's input in there. So as it, it's a smorgasbord of ideas. We are going to listen to public comment after that, and then we're going to winnow the letter down. We will vote on basically every paragraph. Majority will rule on this one. And if there are people who disagree with a comment in there, we will make note of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry. As I read through this more than once, I, I realized that there are different, the same idea being expressed differently. How will we? How will we manage that?
Well, when we go through this, if that, it would be helpful if you said, if you let me know if that's, since you've read it multiple times, it sounds like you can let us know that it's stated somewhere else and we might be able to, I'm hoping to eliminate some of the things that are on there. Yes.
Right. Yeah, the redundancies. Thank you.
For sure. Yeah. And that it's cohesive. Okay. Alrighty. Would you mind putting the letter up, Katrina? Okay. All right. It's addressed to the County Board of Supervisors. The Sonoma Springs Municipal Advisory Council approved on January 12th. It was a little presumptuous of me, but I threw it in there anyway. The following recommendation for the future use of Sonoma Developmental Center in Glen Allen, California. First and foremost, we want to urge the Board of Supervisors to consider a fourth alternative that is inclusive of the ideas of our vision for Sonoma Valley community. We acknowledge that during a global pandemic outreach can be challenging, and for that reason alone, we request more time to consider another alternative. We also recognize that folks want the SDC plan to cure all our housing, economic, climate, and cultural concerns. We recognize that that is not possible to solve at all. However, the plan, a plan that is more inclusive and supportive of our local community can be a reality. Secondly, is recognize that moving efficiently through the developmental process is in the interest of all parties. Careful, careful movement through the planning stages can be achieved. This can achieve this end. As a guiding principle, we urge the Board of Supervisors to require local knowledge and expertise already accumulated in formulating a fourth option. Several organizations were formed to provide input to the apparent opportunity to influence the development of the SDC site. Additional local interest groups already in existence offered their detailed data and observations. The locally gathered information will be useful in addressing the recent pressing and ongoing concerns over drought and fire. In addition, we urge the Board of Supervisors to ban that the State of California financially support the infrastructure and repair of the SDC campus. We have heard a variety of interests regarding the development of SDC. Some are competing and others are complementary. There are some commonalities and agreements among the stakeholders, and we are in agreement with the following areas. And that, that sentence is not true because this has not been, we have not voted on this, but my hope is it can be. There is a strong desire to find a fourth option in the SDC land that is inclusive of our Sonoma community values and diversity of our population, especially for our vulnerable populations, including my ex, elders, and disabled. Housing sustainability and affordability of housing owner occupied affordable. People who work in Sonoma Valley can afford to live here and sustainable housing to be the forefront of any future SDC development. Owner occupied affordable and sustainable housing to be the forefront of any future SDC development, that the capacity of units be significantly reduced to be in line with the capacity of the site, taking into account traffic congestion, fire safety, evacuation routes during the fast spreading conflagration and environmental and climate concerns. That any and all housing be affordable and that the housing be designated for those who work and live in Sonoma Valley. Owner occupied affordable multifamily housing be the forefront of any future SDC development, that the number of units be significantly increased to be in line with the capacity of the site, taking into account traffic congestion, fire safety, and evacuation routes. Is this feasible, fees financially feasible? No new buildings? Add solar? Keep with Sonoma aesthetics? Providing a second access to Highway 12 from the east side of the SDC campus should be a priority for emergency egress and the possibility as a permanent thoroughfare to alleviate pressure on the existing road infrastructure. Limit traffic congestion problems in the Tulay Highway by providing adequate transportation. Negative for wildlife preservation. Maintain the wildlife corridor and land preservation, the rural nature of our valley. Maintain the rural nature of our valley, develop plan to maintain the wildlife corridor while preserving its, in perpetuity, the currently underdeveloped natural lands of the site. Include community facilities that include a plaza, community hall, park, sports fields, and performing arts theater, community health center, recreational opportunities for the trades, educational opportunities for the trades, excuse me, recreation, swimming pool, soccer fields, yoga, and other classes. Include mental health outreach or crisis center for youth and adults, a community health center. Fire safety and climate resiliency, take into consideration our current reality, taking into consideration, take into consideration our current reality, excuse me. Provide educational and employment training facilities, lobbying state for funding. These suggestions were developed based on the information provided by the Springs Municipal Advisory Members, Sonoma Valley Housing Group, and community members.
Charity, if I may, I just want to point out for those that are watching or viewing this letter for the first time, the color coding, anything that is in blue is, is or was added at the general or the regular meeting on January 5th, anything in green was added by the council since that date. So just wanted to make that public.
Thank you. Okay, we will take public comment now. And Katrina, will you be taking, will you be adding whatever notes are? How will we take those into consideration?
Good question. This is a very unique situation. Since I have to keep track, I would need to have someone either help me with the time or help make note of what the community public comment is taking place. So I do need to rely on the council for assistance with this.
I can do the time since you have the doc.
Okay. Now, is this, this is a public comment? Is it information that you want to include in the document, or you're just making notes of?
Just making note of it right now?
Okay. Then I don't need to add it into the document.
Okay. Okay. Go ahead and promote the first panelist and I'll set the timer. Hold on a second. Yikes.
Okay.
Just want to make sure.
I see one raised hand.
Okay, I'm ready to go when you are.
Okay, Terry, please state your name and your comment for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Terry Shore, 515 Hopkins Street in Sonoma. And that is in Boys Hot Springs. One, I just want to thank very much the Springs Mac to take all the time to work on a letter regarding the Sonoma Developmental Center, which is so important to the entire community. Really, really appreciate all the time and energy and enthusiasm that you're putting into it. I did send in some specific comments. I don't know if it's possible for me to screen share. I don't think I'll be able to really read all of this into the, a lot of time. Is screen sharing a possibility or probably not?
Probably not.
No? Okay. Well, I'll just hit the high points and I, I believe that my comments were distributed to the, the Springs Mac, so anyone can pick up on any of those items if you're interested. In general, I definitely support the Springs Mac sending a letter to the county, seeking a fourth alternative, seeking more resources for the state to clean up and to maintain the site. I'd like to just share my comments on the proposed edits about the housing sustainability and affordability of housing. There are two key areas that I would suggest you consider is where you say owner occupied, I would suggest you add deed restricted, affordable.
So that was ninety seconds, Terry.
Is that what we're getting? Oh, I thought that was just for the first part when you were talking about the not on the agenda.
No.
So, so are you going to be looking at the comments I sent in? Are you only going to be considering the comments that the other commissioners have included?
I'm going to respond to that, Terry. Those comments that were received prior to this meeting were distributed to the council for their review and consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
I don't see any more raised hands.
Okay.
There's one more raised hand. Jim Price, I believe, please state your name.
Yes, my name is Jim Price and I am a resident of the Springs. And I think, I want to thank the map for addressing this issue. The one thing that I think we really need to concentrate on here is the time element. I don't see anything in here that, that addresses that. I think I would like to see this letter asked for more time. I think a two-year period would be, would be the optimum so that we can properly, properly vet the issues. The fact that this, this process has taken place during the time of COVID, which has not really allowed great public participation is, is a primary reason for this. And I think that the state needs to be dissuaded of the notion that they have had more, more than enough time, which I was very disturbed to hear at a, at, well, nevermind. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. There are no further raised hands.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to make sure I have all the comments that were sent by email up for myself. So I need one second.
So to recap, Terry wants to make sure or supports the seeking fourth alternative, seek funding from the state. Housing sustainability and owner occupied should indicate de-restricted affordable housing. Jim indicated time element needs to be addressed, need to ask for more time, two-year period is not properly indicative of the time that we have had during taking into consideration COVID. I hope I adequately summarize the comments. If anybody feels like I missed something, please let me know. Territory, I'd also like to acknowledge that Jesus has joined the meeting. We do have a fifth member on.
Thank you, Jesus. I'm glad you're here. Okay. All right. So we'll go, we've received public comment. I'm hoping that people were able to read the emails that we received. We did receive one from Terry. And I think we received one from a couple of other people. So I'm hoping that you were able to take those into consideration. Jesus, did you have a question?
Yes, I was unable to look at the the public comments because they are, they were sent as a Adobe Reader document and for some reason I cannot access that. I don't have that installed on my computer. That might be the reason.
If my take, if, if you want, Karina, put those in a non-Adobe format. I could send them to Jesus right now.
I will appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for doing that.
I will make note of that to our ISD department, just so everyone here knows and the public knows, we typically, when we're distributing material, we must convert it into a PDF to prevent any editing when items are being forwarded or materials being forwarded. This is the second time I hear about the Adobe PDFs, so we will look into it with ISD. I, I will keep the council updated.
Thank you, Karina. Okay. So we're going to go, so we're just going to go slow. We're not going to speed through this. We're going to take lots of deep breaths and we're going to get through this together. So we're going to go back to the letter. And we're going to take this paragraph by paragraph. And we're going to vote. And make sure that we're all in agreement on what's stated on the page. And Karina, we're going to be very kind to her, is going to take notes on the document to the changes that we are asking for. So I'm going to read the first, I don't think I need to read the address or the Dear Board of Supervisors. I think we can probably all agree to that. But I am going to read the first sentence. The Springs Municipal Advisory Council approved on January 12th the following recommendation for the future use of the Sonoma Developmental Center in Glen Allen, California. So I'm going to need a second or a first and a second. And then an all in favor.
My take, a technical thing, um, is it actually considered Eldridge? I don't, I mean, we all know, but.
So let's add it in.
We all know where it is. I think it's technically Eldridge.
Okay. Any other changes to that?
Territory, I also added the S for Springs.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the first paragraph beginning with the Springs Municipal Advisory Council approved.
There's that, oh, can you mention your name? Because Lynn Marie has a hard time.
This is of, of Ram Goldman. And I make a motion to approve the first paragraph of our letter, the Springs Municipal Advisory Council approved on January 12th.
Is there a second?
I can that.
All right. Thank you, Jesus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Second, all right. Second paragraph. First and foremost, we want to urge the Board of Supervisors to consider a fourth alternative that is inclusive of the ideas and vision of, vision, our, oops. Thank you, of our Sonoma Valley community. We acknowledge that during a global pandemic outreach can be challenging, and for that reason alone, we request more time to consider another alternative. I think someone suggested that we add time in here, actual, how much time. So we'll go back to that in a second. We also recognize that folks want the SDC plan to cure all our housing, economic, climate, and cultural concerns. We recognize that this is not possible to solve it all. However, a plan that is more inclusive and supportive of our local community can be a reality. Are there any changes or additions to this paragraph?
My take?
Hold on, I'm going to, I'm going to call on names. I see a Rob and then I saw Iris.
I would like to put before the word time, adequate time. We could put in adequate time up to a two-year period in incorporating Jim Price's suggestion. Up to a up to just before two.
Okay. I think it was Iris who was next.
Thank, thank you. We all, okay, I'm wondering if it would be better to separate the we also recognize into its own separate paragraph. It's not, it's, I, I realize it's just a sentence, but it might read better more easily. And I think some of the things that I wrote under secondly could be included in the first paragraph for brevity. Most the point I wanted to make was, is several organizations were formed to provide, and we could strike apparent, the apparent. That was, but anyways, several organizations were formed to provide the opportunity to influence the development of the SDC site. And additionally, local interest groups already in existence offered their detailed data and observations. And I, I felt like that could perhaps go into the first paragraph. What do you think?
We're, I think.
Be melded.
Mm-hmm. Where after alternative at the end of the first paragraph?
Well, the first sentence is to consider a fourth alternative is inclusive of the ideas and vision of our Sonoma Valley community.
After community? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we can see how that looks and reads.
Karina, do you see where she would like it? Yep.
And I shouldn't talk so fast.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting we strike the rest of the paragraph that you had written?
Um, well, I do feel as though that actual careful, what I said, the careful movement through the planning stages would be a really good thing because the whole you know, as a way perhaps of circumventing lawsuits, which you know, the ideas of that has already been mentioned in various places.
And it would, where do you want it to go?
Oh, hmm. Okay. Um. Perhaps after, perhaps after the drought and fire. The last sentence in the, that's been moved to the first paragraph.
I want to be clear, I'm moving this.
Moving, no, you're moving careful movement. So right there, to the, to the end of that sentence, to the end of that paragraph. And you're going to move it to yes. You got it.
Yeah.
And we're
Yes. Yes. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what careful movement means.
That's a good clarifying.
I don't, I don't understand it.
What I meant, but well, okay.
I think it's cautious.
Conscious?
Cautious.
Cautious. Okay, cautious. Okay.
Cautious. Yeah. Okay. Is that better, Abram?
I still don't even, I don't even know that you need movement. Just cautious.
Cautious.
What? No, my God. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand movement, cautious movement.
Okay, how about caution through the caution through the planning stages can achieve this end?
What is the caution? What is, what is being cautioned about?
There have been so many complaints that local people and, and input was not, was not taken heed of by the official planners.
Yeah, well, I think doesn't the next sentence? Let me see, to require local knowledge sort of.
Yeah, I think you cover it in other places.
Okay.
I don't know if we need that sentence.
Let's take it out.
I think as a guiding principle.
Yep. I think it's, I think, I think. I think, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Hannah or Jesus, do you have any comments to, because now what we had is one paragraph is now three. So are there any, do either one of you have any comments on this, Hannah? Is your hand up? I can't tell.
Yeah, sorry if you can't hear me. I'm in a car. Can you hear?
Yeah. Thank you for being here. Mm-hmm.
Uh-oh.
I can hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Uh-oh.
Me? You can hear me? Okay, great. Whole group of sentences. No, you can't hear me?
In and out, Hannah. You're coming in and out.
Is it possible to text?
I don't know. I can text the video.
Are you driving?
Yeah, well, I'm not driving myself. I'm in a car.
Oh, now I can hear you. Speak quickly.
Okay, I just am concerned about asking for community input when community input is what has, have, have the housing numbers. And you know, I've seen proof from many studies that community input shows one viewpoint more than others because certain people have more time to go and give community input. So that's my hesitation.
Okay.
Station here.
So maybe we need, because what I mean by community input is getting a diverse group of folks. So maybe there needs to be.
There's, there's people for like the housing group and expert groups that, that, that are formed that I don't know that they were the ones that, that we're talking about, but
I don't know that they were the ones that, that we're talking about, but if we could imply somehow that just not, we're not really necessarily looking for more free for all like we're having now, but I think the more expert organizations or we, I think we, we, that was even, that may have been covered somewhere else too.
Hannah, why don't you be more specific of groups that you feel have not been heard?
Well, the analysis from Diet and Batia, when they did the analysis, it showed that the majority of people who responded were, you know, predominantly white over a certain age. You know, just didn't reflect the Springs.
How did, how did, how did they calculate that? I mean.
Because they asked you to provide. Yes, they asked for your age and your race and your, all those things, yes. So the analysis done by the the consultants that we hired to run this whole process have said that the people providing inputs are from a predominantly a certain group, which is not reflective of the wider populace.
Well, then how would you like, how would you like, how would you like to change that?
How would I like to change what?
How, how, you know, given that what are you recommending?
I guess what I'm saying is that the loudest voices in the room are not necessarily the best people to be making the decision. You know, just because people are speaking up does not mean that that is in the best interest of everyone in the valley.
Well, what's, what's true in, in, in almost every government entity? It's the people that speak the loudest wherever it is are, are there. I mean, if you've ever been to a county meeting, there's hardly anybody there. Except those that might be affected by a particular agenda item. I mean, we, we see this, I mean, we see it e- even in our little Springs Municipal Advisory Council.
Right, and all I'm saying is that whoever wants to talk the loudest should not necessarily get to make decisions like having the amount of housing that was recommended by experts. You know, just because someone lives nearby does not mean that they own the land of the SDC. It belongs to the state and should benefit everyone.
Well, we, we could, we could have a, a long discussion on this, but the truth, you know, I mean, everybody has a voice. Everybody has a voice in our country.
Well, the analysis shows that that's not true, that the voices are not being heard equally.
Okay, so we're going around and around, so I'm gonna stop it there. So I think we do need, I agree with Hannah that there's not enough diversity mentioned in this, that there needs to be other voices other than experts speaking about this, and I don't believe that the Latinx community was very well outreach in this process. So I think that there needs to be, I mean, yes, it's great to take people who know about housing into consideration. I think that's really important, but I also think that there needs to be a greater community voice. And that's why there needs to be more time given to this, because we are in a pandemic and we can't put people together in the same space to have this conversation. And you can't outreach to different, to diverse groups of people the same way you can diver, you can outreach to people who show up to meetings all the time. There needs to be more of an effort, and we've seen that over and over again in every initiative we've taken on. So how can we ensure that we're getting a more diverse group of folks to talk to the planning commission and the people doing the planning about this piece of land?
Well, let me ask you this, would it be would you say La Luz reflects the Latinx community?
A part of it.
The community is quite diverse.
I'm, I'm just asking, I mean, because you, you can say, you know, the process need to reach out, those aren't represented or haven't been represented. I don't know, whatever you, you wanna say in there to do that, put it in there.
Okay. Ray, did you want to add something to that? I, was your hand up, Ray? No? Jesus?
Yeah, 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 sorry.
Wow, Ray, go ahead.
Get my buttons confused and talking first. So you mentioned, like, in the middle of the paragraph, additional local interest groups. Yeah, that. I mean, these are, are these the groups that you're referring to?
No, because they haven't offered their detailed data or observations.
They actually, some of them did.
Interest groups already in existence offered their detailed.
Right, but that's not the groups I'm talking about.
Okay. What, and how, so how do we identify the other groups? And how do we differentiate the two?
Yeah.
And, yeah, address.
I'm just open to a suggestion either from you, my take, or Hannah, because you, you're requesting it, and I, I just think you should come up with the language.
Oh, I'm willing to. Jesus, do you have a comment?
Yes, on this sentence after the, the locally gathered information will be useful in addressing the recent pressing and ongoing concerns over. Uh, and I feel like the concerns, the information that was gathered covers her concern than just drug and, and fire, so maybe we can add like other aspects of the, all of the, the concerns.
That was my next question, so that, that leads on to the, the next thing, so those two kind of link together and, and it feels like there's, there's gotta be more information from local interest groups or out there. There's more local interest groups that could give in more detailed data and observations. And I just, you know, I, yeah, and, and as Jesus says, I'm sure we could expound upon that scope.
And I would like to say that, that I wrote that sentence because I felt that that the planning uh, group company did not really address concerns over drought and fire. And they have been, you know, those, those are ongoing comments about, about this work. And yes, it would be good to be more specific. And I'm thinking for groups that we want to have included in this process. Also, I would say that actually low-income seniors were not well representative, represented.
So it's somewhere in, and so we're, we are with these couple of sentences, we're saying that local groups have already spoken and you haven't listened to them. Is what this translates to me, and I'm saying, and what I'm saying is that not all local groups did get a chance to participate. Latinx and elders are very, are two very predominant communities in our, in our valley, and they did not get a chance to speak. So I think we can say that there are groups that have spoken, and we should take their interest into consideration, but then in addition to that, there needs to be greater outreach to the communities that were not present at the table.
Well, actually, when I said additionally, local interest groups already in existence offered their detailed data and observations, and that to me implied that they didn't use them. So.
That's not the way it reads to me.
Can we make it better?
So. Yes.
Could we say that local interest groups in existence offered their detailed data and observations and were I would, can we think, I, can I think of something better than something less pejorative than ignored? Or disregarded?
Um, which can we get, sorry, can we get specific and say who we're talking about here if we know specific groups that we want to reference? I think that there's some confusion being created by not naming, naming names.
I don't know who they are.
Be helpful?
Yeah, Iris, who are the groups that you're talking about?
Well, I'm thinking specifically, oh dear, there are so many. The Sonoma Housing Coalition, I believe, offered information. Certainly, Sonoma the, the Ecology Center had a group that was formed around providing input. Sonoma Land Trust did also. Both of those, the Ecology Center and the Land Trust are intimately familiar with certainly the wildlife aspects of, of, of the site. But that's, I don't know, I, I, I have to say, I do not know, because there, there were many.
Then we can't say, then we can't say that because we don't know.
Exactly. That's, I think it would be better to not.
So I think we need to take, I think, I think what we do know is that there were groups that were not consulted, and that's a statement we can make.
Okay.
And we, and we can stand on that. Because we don't know who was consulted with, and we don't know what was taken into consideration. So my suggestion is to take out that, take out existing local interest group. And the locally.
Think you got, took out more than you wanted?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then I think we, I, I think we need to say the locally gathered information, locally gathered information will be useful in addressing the recent. And then I, I think after, I think before that, we need to say that, that an effort to outreach to there needs to be, let me see, I'm just playing, there needs to be an effort to outreach to I mean, the Latinx elders communities. I don't know, I'm not saying this right, it's, the words are just not flowing perfectly tonight.
Oh, okay. I would also like to hear from renters as well.
There needs to be an effort to outreach to Latinx elder communities, renters, anybody else that we think was not included?
Well, actually nobody consulted the homeless for sure.
Yeah, let's consult the homeless.
Sorry, Abram.
And other disenfranchised populations.
Yeah, that's a good one, thank you. Because that really is the point of this, that the desire is to include the disenfranchised populations.
I think that was part of their, part of their mission, wasn't it, to, to, because of the loss in the Development Center that were to encourage homes for, or, or for yeah, I don't have the word for that now.
Um, yes, disabled.
Disabled.
Yes. Yeah. Um, yeah, I don't.
As a guiding principle, we urge the Board of Supervisors to require local knowledge and experience already accounted, already accumulated in formal landing a fourth option.
Yeah, um, yeah, and I think, yeah, Ray's point is good, disabled should definitely be included in there because that was one of the stated goals.
Okay, I'm gonna read the paragraph again.
First. I apologize, I just want to make sure this folded. So if you wanted to touch on this, I know it was brought up, but before you move on.
Why don't? I don't know, was there, what was the question about it? I'm sorry. To be included or not?
It was pointed out that drought and fire are not the only ongoing concerns.
Oh. Can we just say ongoing concerns? I don't know what they all are.
Um, you could say ongoing concerns not exclusive of, but including drought and fire, something like that.
All right, I'm gonna read it again.
And I would suggest that probably where it says apparent in parentheses, that should be struck. Thank you.
All right, first and foremost, we want to urge the Board of Supervisors to consider a fourth alternative that is inclusive of the ideas and vision of our Sonoma Valley community. Several organizations were formed to provide input into the opportunity to influence the development of the SDC site. There needs to be an effort to outreach to Latinx elder communities, renters, disabled, and other disenfranchised populations. Locally gathered information will be useful in the addressing the recent pressing and ongoing concerns, not exclusive of, but including drought and fire. As a guiding principle, we urge the Board of Supervisors to require local, to require local knowledge and experience. And can we take already accumulated out in formulating a fourth option?
You're not muted.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Okay. Hannah, is your?
I think yes.
Hannah, I'm sorry.
It is. I have a question, why we, yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you, my take?
Yeah, I can hear you.
I just want to know why we think elders, why do we think elders weren't consulted? The Diet and Batia analysis of the responses to their survey show that seventy-two percent of respondents were over fifty-five.
I think that I'm thinking of a different elder community.
Okay.
And I was I said low-income elders, actually.
Let's add that. Put low income in there.
Because they really weren't represented.
Thank you both.
Okay. Okay. So. I'm wondering if this paragraph is, if we're able to vote on this paragraph, or if there are other things that need to be added or changed.
Perhaps we don't need to say first and foremost.
We can take that out. I'm all about taking words out.
That's a suggestion.
Yep.
Um, the other thing is at least on my screen, several organizations were formed, apparently does not meet the
I think we should actually take that sentence out. I don't know that it adds to it.
Doesn't matter.
Or, or we could say organizations were formed. The point is that the information didn't impress them. The company that did the work.
Right, so what does that sentence do for us? It doesn't, it doesn't, organizations were formed to provide input to the opportunity.
Okay, and, and there may be, yeah, their information should be reassessed, perhaps, should be assessed.
Well, let's see.
You could say oh, you could say the information provided by local organizations was not incorporated into the plan. I mean, just say it. Come out and say what you think they're doing or not doing.
Okay.
It's true.
That takes care of this other sentence that we took out earlier too.
We're not, it's, we're not, it was there, thanks. Doesn't like that either.
Plans plural.
That's true.
There you go. Well, we're not incorporated. We're gonna move on. Okay, can we? Can we vote on this paragraph now?
I'll make a motion to that we agree on this, that, that we should pass this portion of the document, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, Ray, and then Iris, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Yay! Okay. Two down, let's keep going. Okay. We acknowledge that during a global pandemic outreach can be a challenge, and for that reason alone, we request that, we request adequate, adequate time up to two, up to a two-year period be considered, wait, up to a two-year period. we request adequate, adequate time up to two, up to a two-year period be considered, wait, up to a two-year period to be cons, thank you, Karina. Be considered for another alternative?
To find.
To find, thank you.
And also, up to a two-year period needs to be in brackets, or dashes, or a comma, it's, needs to be separated somehow? Up to two-year period and dash again after year. Thank you. And then the previous paragraph, were not incorporated, it was not incorporated.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Say that again, incorporate, whoa, I'm sorry, missed.
Was not. The information was not incorporated.
Yeah, that's, that's what.
Where it says we're not, you got it.
Was not, thanks, thank you.
Karina, you're being a trooper. Okay. Okay, can we, um, this is our ask, that we're asking for more time. So I'm gonna ask that we agree that we approve this paragraph.
The, there should be a comma removed after a reason, and for that reason alone, then comma after alone. Thank you.
Be considered to find another alternative.
Be, uh, uh, up to a, do your P, period be adopted? Or to find another alternative, um, to be considered.
Or to be considered might work better.
Put, uh, two in front of B. Yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
No, just, just delete that to find another alternative.
Yeah, just.
We request adequate time up to a two-year period to find another alternative. Perfect.
Okay, can I get a motion on this paragraph, or this sentence?
I, I'll make a motion on that sentence.
Ray, is there a second?
I'll second.
Hannah, all in favor? Any opposed? I'm gonna suggest removing the next paragraph. I don't think it's necessary.
I'll make a motion. For a second.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor? Hannah and then Ray. That was my snarkiness. Okay, um, all right.
It didn't come out.
It, what, the paragraph?
It's still there.
No, it's not, it's gone.
Okay, thank you, it was lagging, as you say.
Okay. In addition, we urge the Board of Supervisors to demand that the state of, state of California financially support the infrastructure and repair the SDC campus. Do we want to include this?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, it is mentioned, um, elsewhere.
They've got a ton of money right now. Why not?
Well, it's not a ton of money.
That we, I don't know that we could ask them to demand.
But, what, what, let's, let's be real, anytime somebody owns a property, let's say a gas station, and the gas station is no longer there, it's the owner's responsibility to do the environmental stuff, et cetera. And, uh, you know, the state has allowed it to dilapate. Uh, they are responsible for the condition of that facility. They should be held accountable.
I'm fine with them paying for it. I have nothing wrong with it.
All right, it's, the point isn't that they've got lots of money, it's, the point is that that's what they're supposed, that's what they should do.
Can we use these abbreviations? Have we, have I abbreviated bef, can we go back up to the top? Are we, okay, using those, yeah, okay. Okay, just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, we're gonna vote on this paragraph, or this sentence.
Is there a motion?
Wait, can I say how, uh, wait, can I make a change?
Yeah.
Mayte? Can we say?
Yeah, 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 go, change.
In addition, we urge the BOS to lobby the state of California to financially support the remediation work and repair of the SDC ca- campus, something like that. Just removing demand.
I like that better than demand, demand.
That's good.
Yeah, isn't really, we're not in a position to demand.
Exactly.
Make them, ask them to demand something?
Well, as a smack, smack, we're not in a position to do anything.
No, we were urging them to demand.
But we're good at words.
I like, I like lobby is better.
Lobby's good, I'll go with it. There's something else you said, Hannah.
To lobby the state of California to financially support the infrastructure, great.
Okay, all right, that's good, all right.
I said remediation, I said remediation, but this is fine, this is fine.
Okay, I think remediation might be better, actually.
How about remediation and repair?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cause. Yeah. In, infrastructure could be ongoing.
Okay, all right, can we? Why is?
I make a motion to approve.
Sorry, I, I missed a couple of things that Hannah said, it's not reading properly. Hannah, I apologize, can you please state your statement?
To lobby the state of California to financially.
Support.
Just say, to financially support the needed remediation and repair.
Well, why don't you just say the, the remediation?
All right, take out.
We don't know in the need, no.
The remediate, okay, all right, can we, Avram, are you motioning to?
Yes, I'm, yes, I make the motion to approve, in addition, we urge the BOS to lobby, et cetera.
I'll sign that, I'll second that.
Okay, Avram and Ray, I'm trying to mention their names, Lynn, Maria, I hope it's helping, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, next, there's something wrong with that sentence, though, to financially support.
Yeah.
The needed.
Needed.
Yeah, can you?
The needed remediation work and the needed reme, or the, the, um.
There we go. Ah, no.
Okay, now someone else make a motion to correct that.
To financially, just to, to pay for.
It's fine.
Subsidize, okay.
We're good, we're moving on. Okay.
I, I have to go back, do we wanna vote again, or do I remove the needed?
Uh, we gotta vote again?
Well, this is how, this is the sentence.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Okay, I also think we should remove, let's see, we have heard from a variety of interests regarding the development, some are competing, others are complementary. There are some commonalities and agreements among the stakeholders, and we are in agreement with the following uses. Or the following something, suggestions or following ideas. Okay, is there anything we want to do to change this?
Well, I don't know if we're in gre- agreement of, of all the ideas, because.
So, that's a good point, Avram, why don't we come back to that one at the end, after we go through the points? Thank you. Okay.
I do want to remind the council chair, if I may, that, um, you have to vote on this. Um, I understand you don't necessarily agree, but in order to present this to the Board of Supervisors.
Vote, yeah.
There needs to be a vote on, on the entire letter at the end.
Yeah, but we might be, it might be a four to one or something, or a.
We might want to re, we might want to reword this, we might want to have a minority opinion and a majority opinion.
Yeah. Yep, so I think we can take out this fourth option thing now, because it's covered in the top, is that agreeable? Okay, can I get a motion to remove this one?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I second.
That was Hannah and Iris, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, this is where, this is where I think we're gonna have some differences of opinion.
You think so?
I do, but it's, it's good, it's healthy. All right, uh, can you scroll up a little bit? Um, thank you. Okay. Okay. So we do have a differing of, difference of opinion here. And I kind of, I mean, there is a minority and a majority opinion. Many.
We don't, we don't know if it's a majority yet, but you can assume that.
I'm, I'm assuming it, yes, that's true. So, we need to be able to craft something on housing that either represents our differing opinions, or we can agree on something.
One thing I'd like to interject is that if I under, if what I've read about this is correct, um, what the count, or what the state, the plan is, is that a developer buys this property. I've gotta say, it seems a little crazy to me that it should all go to one developer. That's quite a big chunk, and considering the problems that have been had in the county with big developers recently, it seems a little unwise. But apparently, these are only plans, which is, kind of equates out to ideas. They're not, they're not drawn-up plans, they're not, uh, you know, there's nothing that's going to make the developer follow this plan exactly as we'd like, and as it's stated. And it seems to me we have the opportunity to put in a lower number of houses to see how, you know, or units, um, living units that can see how it goes. How does it work with fire? How does it work with water? How does it work, um, for the whole thing? And then there would be the opportunity, if, if it was feasible, to add more units. Um, and I, I, you know, I, I don't know how we can say that, but I think realistically, um, from what I've read, there's nothing that, there's nothing about the plan that everybody's working on that is going to be written in stone. Which is disappointing and maybe good.
So one thing that people who commented on this are in agreement on is that their owner occupied and sustainable. It appears.
What does sustainable mean there, though? That's what I was wondering. How sustainable is?
I took out sustainable out of mine, just to confirm that, so I'm not saying that that's necessarily a, a point.
I can take it out, a dozen about.
I, I'm just asking, I just didn't understand.
Oh, I want there to be solar, I want there to be things that are.
That's all required by code, Mayte, that's, that's, that's in our building code. All that stuff is required by code, you don't have to worry about sustainable housing or any of that stuff.
Well, well, you could go.
Aspect of is, is, i- 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 is provided by our building code.
Okay.
And, well, yeah, but, but you can actually go beyond that, Ray.
You sure can, Avram.
And, and, you know, in terms of passive, you know, heating, uh, you know, facing things in certain directions.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, there are a lot of things that can go beyond the building code to make more sustainable and environmental, sustainable and environmentally friendly.
I wasn't, I, I, I have my hand up here for a minute.
Oh, sorry, Ray.
Let me finish my, my thoughts here, um, I, you know, and, and, and there's nothing wrong for, uh, anybody doing that, but, but it's probably, probably gonna get the building code on this. And there's nothing gonna make it more affordable than adding more housing, um, so I, I don't see how make, how making this project. I, I, I'm with Hannah on this, um, on, on, out of this, uh, group of comments here, I guess I should just say that.
Well, one of my concerns is over fire, you know, that, the area there, there, um, part of it did burn. The other thing is, it's not going to, it doesn't make any sense to, to overbuild and then have, have those houses burn. That's, you know, that's not sustainable, and it doesn't, it doesn't do low-income any, people any good to lose their homes.
So let's not put any more people than were there before. We have thirty-nine thousand plus, uh, thirty-nine hundred plus nineteen hundred is, uh, five thousand, five hundred people divided by the homes, you know?
But no, I, I, I don't, I don't. Yeah, I don't think.
They were a passive population, the people that worked there obviously weren't, but the people who lived there for the most part were pretty passive. And the impact, uh, they didn't drive, um, they, they, they probably, they didn't have a, a lot of, uh, electrical gadgets that needed to be powered, um, you know, I mean, they were pretty immobile.
And the staff, the staff was a ro, the staff was a rotating staff, so there was not X number of staff people there.
So the staff were driving in and out, three shifts, I think.
Yeah, three shifts, which, 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 you know, if you have a, a population there, and, and we know that there are certain driving times worse than others, because most people work a certain kind of shift. And we see that on Highway twelve, uh, if, if, if you, you drive that every day, and, and I do, um, you know, it's, uh, stop and go, um, from Verano, many times down to Boys. And, um, you, you, you put a bunch of people on top of that. I mean, I, look, basically, you know, a lot of those plans, you know, um, were for fifteen hundred, I mean, you know, anywhere between nine hundred and twelve hundred homes, um, and the plans basically said, uh, twenty-five percent would be affordable housing. My suggestion is, uh, twenty-five percent of twelve hundred would be three hundred units that would be affordable housing. My suggestion would be put four fifty in there and make them all affordable housing. Um, and you, you, you know, there are a lot of tax incentives to do that, that's why we've had uh, two, uh, one, and, and, and two more projects on, on the board, you know, on the, uh, on the, in the planning process in the Springs, based on the ability to use tax incentives for affordable housing. So at four hundred and fifty units, that gives you more units than what you would get with the entire, uh, you know, with the, the plan at twelve hundred, getting twenty-five percent. Um, so, and, and at the same time, uh, have a reasonable, hopefully reasonable amount of housing that would not lead to catastrophe and a conflagration, as well as we've got issues on water, serious issues on water, and we also have serious issue on fires. We live in what's called a high-risk fire area, as designated by the state, which is different than being in a whole lot of other areas in Sonoma County. And I, 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 we can't fool ourselves that we're, you know, in this totally flat, non-treed environment. We are called high-risk, which affects insurance. As a matter of fact, insurance rates here in the valley have gone up substantially, uh, particularly in, in, in areas like Eldridge. Uh, and, and nobody's even considering the impact of that, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
I, I have, uh, I have five cents in reply.
Okay, Ray and then Jesus.
I, 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 I hear you, Avram, and, and I, I think that there's gonna be, uh, a lot of people that see things your way. Um, I grew up in Southern California where zoning was much different than it is here. One of the things I found admirable about Sonoma County, not that they do it that well, I think they could do it better, is their use of, uh, urban land, urban growth boundaries. So the, the SDC, the area that becomes developed, essentially is one of those little boundaries. We added into Eld, we added into, um, the, the other part of Eldridge, that's the residential, commercial, you know, properly, property-owned, and, and extended to Glen Ellyn, you have, you have a little corridor, an urban growth area in there, a, a little corridor that starts to happen. And so the, the, the notion there is to avoid what happened in Southern California, where, when I grew up in Southern California, it was, it was surrounded by San Bernardino, was surrounded by orange vineyards, grapevine. When I grew up in Southern California, it was, it was surrounded by San Bernardino, was surrounded by orange vineyards, grapevines. Whatever else. It was just pretty much natural. Now it's warehouses and houses and freeways. Um, so I, I, I think that by placing the housing where the housing belongs. As the policy is in the county, to do that is the appropriate thing to do. And I encourage more housing to go here, not less, because we've got a housing problem everywhere in the county that is a fire, high fire zone also. So you have these, you got flooding, you got other issues in other places too. This isn't the only part of Snowma or of Snowma County. We, we, this is a policy issue, not a backyard problem.
Thank you, Ray. Hey, Sis.
Well, I actually am, um, disagreeing with, uh. Ray right now. Uh, I thought. And I apologize for if I'm not informed, but. I, as you are saying, the contracts state that housing has to be over from nine hundred to. Twelve hundred house, houses, units. So why don't we make, uh, I think that, uh. Suggests that in, to alleviate, um, some of the concerns that, um. Of, um, how, of fire risk and water and traffic, uh, to reduce the number. Of affordable housing and housing overall. To, uh, less than that and. It. Will. Be. In comp. And to how, uh, when the, um, CDC was, um, functioning and ongoing. Because of, um, of the, um, traffic and all of the people that used to go there and. Um, leave there and work there and visit there. Just a suggestion.
So. A couple of the things that I'm hearing are. We want this to be affordable for the people that are in our community. It sounds like that is relatively agreeable. Sustainable could go one way or the other because it's already in code. I also heard an increase, I've heard both, an increase and a decrease. In the number of units, but I also heard Iris say. And this is not all going to get built overnight. So is there value in saying? That this is a phased in project? Because I do, I agree with Hannah and Ray, there needs to be more housing out there. There ne- there needs to be affordable housing and what that looks like, I'm not sure. I don't know the number of units. But I do think that. But considering that it is a phased in plan. And that the planning around this is not for it to all happen at once, which it can't anyway. What does that look like? And that there are benchmarks within this system to be able to evaluate. Where they, where we currently are. To raise point, it's been a fire area forever. This whole valley is. Um, do, and I, you know me, I'm all about emergency preparedness, but I also want people housed. So I'm wondering if it can state, and this is just conceptual, I'm not putting words on a paper. That it is, that is owner occupied affordable housing in a phased in process. That there are benchmarks built into the planning to evaluate. The current. You know, effectiveness or something.
Um, my take, I, I like that. I, I would, I would certainly be willing to, uh. To see Avram's four fifty and raise it to six hundred, just for starters. But no, that's a very good point because it does give an, it gives an opportunity to evaluate. The impact on, uh, of fire and, and hopefully not more drought, but. You know, it's, it's definitely there. Um, and also the impact on, on roads. And, um. The possibility of evacuation, but I. To the point that, um, there were, um, the, the, the numbers that were floating around five thousand people at SDC. Yes, but they were all contained within all the buildings that you see out there. And, and, um, it doesn't look like, it, it looks to me like there's going to be a whole lot more units out there than, than. Uh, the housing that, that already was there. And of course, that's the problem with including the working, the people that works there. As part of the population there. So I, I think that's a great idea to, um, to acknowledge that it's a phased in project and that there should be. There should be stops along the way to evaluate how it's impacting. Infrastructure.
Hey, thank you, Iris. Hannah?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to respond to Iris's point about thinking that there was going to be more housing. That there were, used to be. I remember at the presentation of the combined max meeting. With the consultants, they said there would actually be less square footage. In the building, in the, in any of the plans they presented, which had between nine hundred and twelve hundred units of housing. And square footage is currently, uh, covered by buildings that exist from the previous SDC. Uh, so that was one point I wanted to make. There's actually for all the plans, less square footage than currently existing buildings. And then my second point, I like this idea of kind of phased or, you know, check in points. And I think one way that that could be, um, achieved would be if. We asked the Board of Supervisors to sell to multiple different developers and so they could sell. One portion and then another portion and then a third, you know, there could be many different portions. And that just means that we have, um. You know, more chances of getting good developers and, you know, just not one person gets all of the pie. Um, which is an idea I like. Maybe more mid-sized developers or smaller developers could be involved.
Like mid pin that, that's doing houses for, you know, and they could, you know, do, do sweat equity type stuff. That, that would be great. I, I like the idea of multiple developers instead of one developer for sure.
Yes, and I think that we have to recognize that we are. Trying to get as much. Low income, well, as much affordable housing, which is, it, which is a range of housing. From pretty really, really seriously low to, to bumping up against, um, the high end of the area median income.
Okay, so can I?
That, that's all going to be, um, I'm sorry, that's, that's, that would have to be, um. A specific kind of developer. It has to be someone who, who, who develops that kind of property. It's not.
So the devil's in the details and we're making a recommendation. So. Let's put something, let's put a sentence on the page. And see if we can get to a point where we can agree on what the sentence is. Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
In answer to Ray's urban boundary and someone else said, we've always had fires. Um, we're in a whole different period because of climate change. The whole dynamics of fires now are, are really. Quite different. I mean, we've had fires in Sonoma before, but they were spread out over many, many, many years. We're starting to see, just like other climatic events. We're starting to see these events happening in much shorter periods of time. And, um. I, 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 I think we have to consider those things. Uh, I know insurance companies do. Um, because. There are some people that can't even get insurance now. And that area out there is, i- i- is quite high risk. I'm not saying you can do what you want. You can put three thousand units or whatever. I'm just saying there are going to be some. Really tight concerns. My, my concern is to get as much affordable housing as possible. I don't like the idea of the twenty-five percent. That's why I suggested all of the housing be affordable housing. To get the maximum number of housing units out there. I think it's also important that we put in there that any and all housing is to be for. Those that work and live here in Sonoma Valley. That has not been the case of affordable housing. Here in the Springs. There were people that could apply and be on the. On the list and the lottery that don't live and don't work here. That doesn't alleviate our issues in the valley.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree with you, Avram. So, uh, we're going to add a sentence, so. Um, Karina, go, start it after SDC development. Owner occupied affordable. People who live and work in Sonoma Valley. Sustainable housing at the forefront of any future development are recommend, okay. Wait, live and.
Sorry, did I not follow you?
No, I'm not following me. So hold on a second.
Housing be designated, the housing be designated to those.
Not legal to say that?
Yeah, it, it can be legal if, if you put it in a trust.
Owner occupied, affordable and sustain, we're taking out sustainable.
Oh.
I, I. Owner occupied. Affordable housing be at the forefront of any SDC development. Our recommendation is, um. For. The resident, the, that.
Is, is that for peo- is, is, um. That it be for people who, um, work and or live in Sonoma Valley? Because.
How about if Sonoma Valley residents are given preference?
But what does preference mean?
I don't know that you can, um.
Well, you, you can, Ray, if, if.
What, within? How, how, how do, how do you write that in, Avram? Within the geographic, people that can live here can have to move here.
Well, I, I, I think if you, if, I think if you, if you write it in, then it's, it's really up. To the Board of Supervisors to figure a way to do that.
I've seen a lot of things written in that aren't legal. But I, I've seen a lot of things written that aren't legal, but that, I don't, I don't know that, that, I, I think that, I think you, that you can give preference. To locals.
But how are we going to solve the problem of affordable housing? I mean, I know how I was brought up that teachers can't afford to live here.
By providing more housing.
Yeah, but, yeah, but what I'm saying, it with these monster housing units. I mean, they're talking about twenty-five percent.
Strongest way possible? I don't know what that means. Avram, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know that, that you can make them do it.
Well, you can certainly, you, you can certainly put in there that it be designated and that's a preference, correct? Isn't that a preference to be designated?
What if we have a teacher coming in? What if we have a teacher coming in from out of state and, and she's got a job here?
Well, if she has a job here, then that, that's fine.
Okay, so then do we need to be more specific?
That, well, the suggestion was work and li- and or live in Sonoma Valley.
Correct.
Yeah, you know, don't people tend to try and live and work or live where they need to be? Why are we trying to tell people where they need to be?
No, but we're trying.
It's a, it's a market. And so people, if we fix, we can't fix just the Snow Valley housing market. That's not how markets work.
It's like, it's like, it's like.
In Petaluma, people live in Santa Rosa. We can't just fix the housing crisis by saying this is for us. Exactly.
Well, let me put it this way. I, I, I disagree with the premise and we'll leave it at that. I don't want to continue. Uh, to discuss it. I think, I think at this point, uh, we need to come up with a statement and vote yea or nay.
So take out the preference about living in the valley. Or being in the valley. I think, I think that it's a shame that folks who live here can't, that folks who work here. Can't live here and that people who live here can't work here. So it's, happens all the time. I watch it all the time.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to see that stay in there because it, we are expressing our desire.
Um, I, I'm not against other people coming here. That's not what I'm saying, but if you live here, it would be awesome if you, if. You could work here as well and vice versa. So I don't know that.
We should, I think we should leave that where, where you have it there. I, I think that's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
I just want, if, I think you should be able to afford to live where you work.
Does need some help though, so.
I think, I think it's, I think it's better put now.
Okay. Well, I think we need to get to the phased in part of this that we want to add, that there's a. I like Avram's suggestion that it's all affordable housing, that it all be affordable housing and it's a phased in project where there are benchmarks along the way to. Evaluate the impact on fire, water, roads. Keep going, Karina.
I'm trying, you're talking too fast for my fingers. Um, I, I want to make sure we have this last sentence, right? Um, I.
I don't know that we do. Let's just put it all down there and then we'll deal with it because I think this is going to be, this is the most complicated piece. And then we're going to take a break if getting through this in our recommendation. Okay, so, um. That the affordable housing, it's a phased, phased project that provides for. Evaluation. On the impact to fire, roads, climate, transportation.
Can we add multiple developers after four? Provides for multiple evaluations or multiple, um, yeah, you can put it wherever you want. Yeah.
And, uh.
Multiple, um, multiple developers, yeah.
Cool, okay. Wait, put it, Karina, hold on, stop. Take for multiple developers and put it provide after provides for.
Yep.
Okay. And then. Put a period after developers and then take out multiple after that. And then, now, hold on.
No.
No, we want evaluation.
Evaluation.
Just do a comma after multiple developers and keep going where you had. Yeah.
Okay.
Evaluation on the impact of fire. We just, that's a, that's a list. Yeah.
I would say it is all affordable housing, not, you don't need the that, I think.
You could just say infrastructure instead of transportation because I think that covers all of it.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's a little contradictory with the first sentence and, and, and the third sentence when you say. Affordable housing to be at the forefront and then you're saying that all of the housing be affordable.
Okay, so do you want to make that? Do you want to?
You can, I think you can make the statement at the beginning and, and.
Then all of it be affordable housing?
Eliminate that and all be affordable housing.
So take those four or five words right there, Karina, that it all be affordable housing and put that at the front. I think that's what Avram said.
Well, well, that, 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 that the housing be, you know, all. Owner occupied affordable housing for, of any future.
Are you talking about this, the first sentence or second?
Yeah, the first sentence.
What do you want it, how do you want it to read?
Uh, I, I was thinking that, 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 that the housing be owner occupied, that all the housing. That all the housing. Be owner occupied of affordable housing, uh, of any future SDC development. I don't know, we can.
Yeah, that's good.
We're good.
Um, for. Um, probably for not of. Any future.
All right, I'm going to read it. That all the housing be owner occupied for, owner occupied affordable, we've got. How about owner occupied and affordable or that all, because now we've got housing in there.
Be, oh, I see what you're saying, that, that all the housing. Oh, I see what you're saying, that that all the housing
Affordable housing.
All the housing.
You can say that all development.
Development, that all development, there you go. Be owner occupied affordable housing for any future SDC development. Our recommendation is that housing be for the people who work and live in Sonoma Valley.
So they can.
So they can afford.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to put that in there. That's.
Take it out.
That's, yeah, because I think, I mean, I think the intent is you know, for people who work and live here and who qualify for affordable housing.
Alright, so take out the sentence on our recommendation. Is that what I heard you say?
No, just that one line in there that you don't have to state why.
Okay, okay, thank you. That it is affordable how, that it all be affordable housing and it's a phased in project that provides for multiple developers, evaluation of the impact of fire, roads, climate and infrastructure. Your hand up, hand up.
Oh, uh, well, you've already said affordable housing, so I would say this project should be a phased project between utilizing multiple developers and should periodically evaluate the impact of fire, roads, climate and infrastructure.
Okay, we're gonna take, we're, we like, I like.
Incorporating multiple developers and should periodically. So yeah, just put in incorporating multiple developers or working with multiple developers.
That's. Partnering's good, whatever.
Rephrasing this, um this project should be a phase project incorporating multiple developers.
Why don't you put instead of the first project word, why don't you put the development under instead of this project.
And then take out that. Yep.
Should we add an equity?
Uh huh. Where do you wanna put that?
I don't know, anywhere you want, uh, climate.
Yep. Okay.
Well, first, we were, are you wanting to keep housing sustainability um that's in the bold at the top?
Oh, yeah, no, probably not.
And and the other thing is, um, we may be shooting ourselves in the, no, no, just take out, oh, yeah. Affordable housing, just just leave affordable housing and take, take out, yeah.
We could encourage development that is beyond code required. I I would put it that way, though, instead of just sustainable housing or whatever, cuz I mean, people could argue that our code is pretty sustainable compared to a lot of states. It is. Um, so we could just argue, or we could just also state that if we wanted to have something more of beyond code, you know, uh as far as sustainability, uh Avra mentioned that too.
Okay, so how about after? Go ahead.
I I just think if we're asking for a hundred percent affordable housing, these people are already on like pretty slim margins.
I think that's a long ask. Leave it out.
Okay, so I'm gonna read this.
Hang on, the other thing is I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot. That all the development be owner occupied affordable housing. That's not you know, giving us the wish list that that's at the bottom down here for um uh community access, um recreation, health, fires.
That's a good point, but how do we say, so I think what we're trying to avoid is having second, third, fourth homes of people, so.
Okay, okay, and and good point. And certainly, yes, definitely. That all housing development, how about? That all housing develop or housing developed to be owner occupied.
Well, but what we, that what.
But but see, because you're you're saying that all development be owner occupied housing. And that's not what we 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 do want all the housing that's there to be owner occupied, but there's other development that's going to be included at.
Put in that all housing development be owner occupied affordable housing. I mean, that says it right there.
Develop, no, all housing developed, I think would be better. Just take take off mint and put in ED, all housing developed. Yeah.
Well, you could say all housing built.
Okay, so we're starting to wordsmith this to death, so.
All all, okay, but now it's.
Okay, Hannah, you wanted to say something?
Well, I think, uh, yeah, I was just wondering if anyone sees any, I mean, I'm wondering why it has to be a hundred percent owner occupied. I mean, don't, is there not? Uh, some people like to rent. I mean, there are some people who are in more transient stages of their life, be that the end of their life or they're move, you know, students, younger people who aren't settled. Do we not see any place for rent rentals, like you know how Mid-Pen? And just the feathers apartment. I I guess I just feel like some people are in that stage where they're ready and some aren't.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, so how do we state, how do we state that? Hold on a second. Okay, so um how do we state that um that these, that these homes are to be lived in by the people who live, right? That they're not, how they're not to come and visit on the weekend.
Yeah, maybe all single family homes are owner occupied. And perhaps the apartments could be rentals or the multifamily.
No, why, why? Yeah, um, I, you know, your, your point is very good, but I I wouldn't want to like lock people into either space in terms of, the thing is that, okay. Um, if if they're rented, they still need to um go to there's still, they still need to go to low income, people who fit.
I didn't counter that. I did not counter that at all. I was just saying one way that we could mix it between things that are owned by people and things that are managed perhaps by a company like Mid-Pen that manages low income affordable housing. I was just suggesting that sometimes people who are single or in a small couple as they're either younger or perhaps older and no longer have kids living with them might be more suited to a size multifamily situation. It was just a suggestion.
Owner occupied.
Just put owner occupied or rental.
Or long term rental.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna make a quick suggestion. Would it make more sense to say that any future SDC develop um housing be owner occupied and then so on?
No, do it. Okay.
Kind of would be cool, though. Saying.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna read this. And then we're gonna take a break after we vote on this paragraph.
Affordable rental. It should be long term rental affordable, affordable renting, affordable rental housing.
But then that changes.
Yeah.
Owner, it needs to be affordable. Affordable housing, affordable needs to be before housing in the begin, right there, affordable. To be owner occupied or long take out and take out of there. Okay, I'm gonna read it. That any future SDC development, develop any future any, that any future SDC developed affordable housing be owner occupied or long term rental housing. Our recommendation is that housing be for the people who work and or live in Sonoma Valley. The development should be fit a phased project incorporating multiple developers and should periodically be evaluated for for the impact, no, evaluate, periodically evaluate the impact to fire, roads, climate, equity and infrastructure. That any future SDC development be.
I think this should be housing here. Be.
Something.
And then.
Yeah, and then take housing out of there.
Okay, the first.
Is awkward.
That any future SDC development.
Yes.
Be affordable housing either owner occupy and then remove housing at the end of the, yeah, or long term rental.
That any future SDC development be affordable housing, either owner occupied or long term rentals.
Should that say um should that stipulate that it's affordable, that the people who move in have to have to fit that category?
I I don't know.
Affordable.
Yeah.
Well.
I mean, okay, can we vote on this or is there anybody that wants to add anything at this point?
Well the Phil, what Iris uh stated, um it kind of gives the impression that all of the development is for housing and it lists out all of the all things that the people want. So it should be that any future SDC housing development be affordable, either or.
Okay.
Owner occupied or long term rental house.
Thank you, Jesus. I think, I don't.
Semi colon after affordable, right? That any future SDC housing development be affordable, semi colon, either.
Yeah.
Yeah, either, yeah, there, yeah, semi colon.
Semi.
That's a colon.
There you go. Okay. Okay, can we take out, you don't need rental after housing, I, cuz we've got housing in the sentence twice. Just run, end it rental.
Um, you could say rental units if you don't, you know.
There you go, rental units. Perfect. Okay, alright, is there a motion to approve this paragraph?
I move to approve the paragraph.
Iris. Hannah, second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
You oppose, Avram?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, thank you. What do you, go ahead, Hannah.
I don't, I don't. Yeah, I don't think we have to.
I just. No, I don't think you have to agree either. I just thought that you said earlier that you wanted all affordable housing, so I'm just a little.
No, I did. That would, no, I I I have issues uh with the size.
Oh, there's no size talked about here, is there?
No. We didn't put in any size.
Size yet.
Well, we said phased in what was the the thing, um development should be a phased project. Uh it it just leaves it for me to to open.
Okay, thank you. That I I wasn't trying to picket you, Avram. I just was confused.
That's okay.
Well, to me, it leaves in the ability to evaluate and make decisions based on what, what has been built, the impact it's having. So can we get rid of?
I mean, it could, it could start at nine hundred and and go to two thousand.
Yeah, I I don't know.
Yeah, I we don't know, we'll have to agree.
Okay, Avram, thank you for your, I appreciate you, um, I appreciate your vote. Okay, so can we take out the other, I, we can take out this, that and the other thing? And then that that. Yes, now we're to road access. We need a break. So it's seven forty-five. Let's take a ten minute break. And then we'll come back at eight fifty, or no, seven fifty-five.
Thanks.
Thank you all. And we're back. Hi, everybody. Before we go on, I just want to acknowledge how hard this is and how much I appreciate everybody's participation and engagement and that everybody is able to voice their opinions and their thoughts. So it's, this is an awesome group, so thank you all.
And and my taste's gonna take us all down to the, to Steiners after, right?
If it wasn't COVID, I would. So I've been doing, so I spent my whole day group writing COVID policy. So that's how I spent my day and then tonight we're writing this. So you know, it's just a day of co-write group writing.
You know how to have the most fun.
Oh, I do, I do. Alright, I think the rest of this will be relatively easy to get through, so um let's bring it back up. Hannah, are you back?
Yeah, I'm here. I just, I'm in a dark car.
Okay, that's alright, just wanna make sure you're here. Okay.
I'm here.
Alright, road access. Um, providing a second access to Highway twelve from the east side of SDC campus should be a priority for emergency egress and possibly as a permanent thorough thoroughfare to alleviate pressure on the existing road infrastructure.
I have to say for me that's a a uh mixed bag. Um, what I've read is that uh that the road that they were thinking about putting through um would be uh an impediment to wildlife travel. Also, it apparently is right near what burned when uh in seventeen. Uh, so maybe not such a good escape route. The other thing, the other concern I have is that um that it would reasonably require um at least if it's going to be used as a thoroughfare, it would be reasonable to think it's going to require a stop, another stop signal along that stretch. So it would be Madrone and there and then Arnold where it comes into um Highway twelve.
Okay, any other, any other um comments on road access?
Yeah, I would suggest that we um evaluate it instead of um make it a priority. Based upon, based upon the wildlife comment. Um, I I wanna make sure that it works with the wildlife corridor. I I I wanna, I I I want, I mean, this could work as a, as a emergency relief valve in case of a fire exit. There are, there are such a thing. And maybe that's all that's needed, but I think it should be evaluated. They had um they had W Trans on board doing um studies, so or somebody on board doing studies, so they could, they could model this and just see if it alleviated um existing road uh traffic. It may not. So it it, I think to evaluate um is is a better way to go.
So I would, I'd also like to suggest, um, I agree with you, Ray. I think that should, there should be an emergency access.
Yep.
And um at a bare minimum.
At a bare minimum, yeah, and and then evaluate and then, and then evaluate to see if if um a permanent thoroughfare could alleviate pressure on the 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 valley wide infrastructure. And we could all give our opinions on what we think would happen, but uh you know, somebody who's experienced in traffic modeling can actually tell us if if that would really work or not. And there's no sense to propose something that we don't know that i- is good or not. But I think, yeah, the evaluate for emergency egress. Yep.
Um, and then I, then we'll fix that sentence that um uh preserving the wild, preserve, preserving the wildlife corridor.
Must be considered or evaluated?
Yeah, uh, I think it's, it's another evaluation, um, well, what, a, a, and, 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 um, the, bu- bu- both of the above should be considered. Um, in, in light of the wildlife corridor and, and any impacts it would make. With, um, a, a, a preference for a balance of life safety and wildlife access.
So can the last sentence say, um. Evaluate. And maintain. Evaluate.
Oh.
And maintain. Evaluate the impacts and maintain the wild, evaluate the, evaluate the impacts on. The wildlife corridor.
Yeah.
E- evaluate the impacts on the wildlife corridor.
Well, why, why can't we just put it up here? Uh, consider and evaluate a second access to Highway twelve from the east side of SDC campus for emergency access. Um, and possi-, uh, and just that, take out and, and put a comma. Possible, possible. Possible permanent thoroughfare. To alleviate. Existing road infrastructure if modeling agrees. And. Wildlife. Cause we're still evaluating. It's a long sentence, I know, but. And wildlife, just wildlife, yeah, period, wildlife corridor. Maybe, yeah, wildlife.
Hmm, well.
Does that make sense now? Consider and evaluate a second access to Highway twelve from the east side of SDC campus for emergency aggra- egress. Possible permanent thoroughfare to alleviate pressure on the existing road infrastructure.
Hmm.
And wildlife preservation or something has to go there.
Yeah, wildlife, some, some more about wildlife, um. Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, sorry.
I'm gonna read it. Consider and evaluate a second access to Highway twelve from the east side of SDC campus for emergency egress. Possible permanent thoroughfare to alleviate pressure on the existing road infrastructure. And wildlife preservation if modeling agrees.
Should this be one of those colon ones where we've got?
Or, or create another sentence.
Yeah, we've got too much going on here.
This infrastructure and.
With the possibility. You could say like with a possibility or evaluate the possibility of a permanent road and its impacts on.
Yeah.
Wildlife and.
On the wildlife.
The access.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, keep it simple somehow.
Consider and evaluate a second from the east side of this campus for emergency egress with the possibility of a permanent thoroughfare to alleviate the pressure on the existing road structure. While maintaining while, I don't know, it's not. It's messy.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, it, it's sort of explaining, I mean, basically emergency egress. And, and the potential, uh, for permanent thoroughfare. Um. We don't have to put to alleviate existing pressure.
Yeah, we could take that out to alleviate existing pressure on the.
Possibility. Uh, of a permanent thoroughfare. Uh, if allowed.
If, how about if modeling agrees? And then. Um. P- a period. Um, and then. Evaluation of wild, uh, impact on wildlife corridor.
And that, that, that said road. Not have an impact on the wildlife quarter.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Ella, can we get some kitchen service here?
Okay.
Sorry, Myte, that was for the cats.
No, that, that's fine. I thought it was very sweet. All right, consider and evaluate a second access to Highway twelve from the east side of SDC campus for the emergency egress. For emergency egress with the possibility of a permanent thoroughfare if modeling agrees. That said road not have an impact on wildlife corridor.
I think it needs one more word and that's beginning of the sentence, it's, provided that said road not have an impact on the wildlife quarter.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'm gonna read it one more time, we're gonna vote on it. Consider and evaluate a second access to Highway twelve from the east side of SDC campus for emergency egress with the possibility of a permanent thoroughfare if modeling agrees. Provided that said road not have an impact on wildlife corridor. Can I get a motion?
A motion to, um. Pass that sentence.
Ray, is there a second?
I'll second.
Aram, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, on to the next one. Transportation. Limit congestion problems on the two-lane highway by providing adequate transportation options.
I, I, you know what? That thing doesn't. Make any sense to me to be included in there. Because. By providing adequate transportation options, I mean, we provide. Adequate transportation options like buses through the valley. And I rarely see more than one or two people on there. Um, I mean, our public transportation system, I hate to say it as a joke. We, we can't seem to get Americans or people out of cars. Uh, we, we put in bicycle lanes on Highway twelve and I never see a bicycle. I mean, it's, there's something wrong with the picture, so I don't know if we get into limit traffic congestion. I, I, I think that's gonna come, I, I, I just don't think it's. It's meaningful in terms of what we're doing, but that's my opinion.
All right, um, Hannah? And then Iris.
Or. I, I mean, I would just like to say that people do bike and I would encourage that any plan includes a class four bike lane. Through the current SDC road and especially if we were to create this new access point. From the east side to twelve, I would like to see a class four bike lane, which is a fully separated from the road bike lane.
I, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, can we add that? Could we make it road access and transportation and add that bike lane part to the top, to the top one?
There's already, there's already two bus stops on that, right there.
And we'll just take out the transportation, take out the, I, I'm with Aram on the, just take out the. Um, limit congestion part. But I think, but I agree, we should have the bike lane plan, any plan. Any plan include a class four bike lane.
Through is, through is what Hannah said.
Any plan include a four. A class four bike lane through.
Through the SDC.
You know, through the existing SDC and. The new road, the new egress road if it were to be created.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna read it one more time. Is somebody's hand up? No, Hannah, is your hand up? Okay, consider and evaluate a second-class highway. Second access to Highway twelve from SDC. Campus for emergency egress with the possibility of a permanent thoroughfare of if modeling agrees, provided that said road not have an impact on wildlife corridor. Any plan? Must include. Should include.
Should.
Include a class four bike lane. Through the existing SDC and new egress road.
It doesn't need and, it just, I think it need just any.
Okay, all right, we're gonna have to revote on this.
A motion that we approve this revised edition.
Uh, Ray, motion, is there a second?
Uh, I just have one, one correction before, if possible, because it doesn't make sense when we say. Whoop you, the wildlife quarter just separated, okay? Um, that, um, it's said road not have an impact on the wildlife quarter, so the should be placed in there.
Okay. Okay, Ray, does your motion still stand?
My motion still stands.
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, I, I think I heard Iris. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, on to the next, beautiful vegetation and wildlife preservation. So we wanna maintain, so we've stated this. Do we need, does this need a separate category?
I think we could take it out.
Well, it, it also has to be that. Any other structures or things that we're building. That the wildlife quarter be preserved, I guess it will be anyway, otherwise it'll be suits by the.
I, I, I still like, I develop the, develop and plan. To maintain the wildlife corridor while preserving. I don't know about, uh, yeah.
I kinda like the blue part.
Yeah.
Maintain the rural nature of the val- of our valley, develop and plant, develop and plan to maintain the wildlife corridor, preserving the, in perpetuity, the. Currently undeveloped natural lands of the site.
And I think that's in the plan, they've got eight hundred, the eight hundred acres or whatever.
It's well, we miss, I think we missed, well.
I like it, I like, I like it.
Yeah, the, the only thing is, is that actually what's desired is that the. They call it the pinch point, it's at the top of the north end, um, be enhanced. But I don't know, you know, that's getting into the weeds as far as.
Yeah, I, I, I like what you, we have down there.
Okay, I'm reading again, I'm gonna ask for a motion, maintain the rural na- rural nature of our valley. Develop and. Uh, I don't know if it's a full sentence, maintain the rural nature of our valley. By developing and planning to ma- or some, I don't know.
I think that's a complete sentence.
It is, it is.
Alright, okay, maintain the rural nature of our valley. Develop and plan to maintain, develop and plan to maintain the wildlife quarter while preserving in perpetuity. The currently un- undeveloped natural lands of the site. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. To approve that sentence.
Iris, second?
I second, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Some of this can go together.
Yeah. Um, and in fact.
I think, I think everything, everything except fire safety and funding.
Yep.
I think funding you guys already covered in a previous paragraph, is it okay to remove this?
Uh, can I get a motion to remove funding?
I, I'm just. Uh, funding, I know the funding for the infrastructure. Yeah.
All right, let's, let's leave it, we'll come back to it, we'll, for now, all right, but I, I think, Aram, you said we could put everything to. So if you move education and employment up there.
No.
Ah, what happened?
No, no, just what Mary Carmen put there. Just, we don't need the title. And, and maybe instead of community access, it could be. You know.
Facilities. Community. Community facilities.
Services?
Services.
Services and facilities.
Okay.
Sort of all services.
And then I think the health goes under there too, right, so you can get rid of the health header?
Yep.
And you can get rid of the education employment header? Okay, now.
We can, and we can do my team, Mary, uh, Mary Carmen, yeah, we can take that out.
And we can, now we need to put together a sentence that incorporates all of this. Or do we want it to be bullet points like this?
Well, you could put an introductory sentence, you know.
Okay. All right, somebody's gonna have to write the introductory sentence. Aram.
I would like to see.
That the development provide. I don't know. And, and see what Hannah has to say.
I was just gonna say that we would like to see the following community services. Available to the public at the new SDC.
Okay, you could put in made available.
Okay. All right.
I, I think, I, I think instead of we'd like to see, I think maybe we could make a stronger statement.
Okay. The development provide, take out we'd like to see and put in the development provide the following.
Yeah. Perfect, let's make it shorter is better.
Uh-huh. We want people to read it. Um. So can we take out, um, Myte and Marty Carmen's names and then we can see what the bullets say? Cause I'm distracted by that.
Me too.
Remove, provide on the first one too, we already said provides, so should you say education as employment training facility?
Yeah.
And then the next one should be community, community facilities that include.
Okay.
So that would include.
Put a capital C with community.
Yeah.
We've.
And we also have community health centers twice and educational things twice, so our first bullet is education. The second one says community facilities and it includes community health and education, so we need to choose to have that in one or the other.
Take out community health and education in the second bullet. And recreation, isn't that kind of? Already stated?
Yeah, we don't.
Well, we say recreation and then we say.
Recreation, recreation is fine, just say recreation.
Say recreation and get rid of.
What you could do is recreation and then put a colon and then put the other kinds of rec- recreation.
Ie, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't even have to put ie, you can just put a, a, a colon.
Sure.
Okay.
That's a semi-colon. Thank you, sorry.
Is recreation? Is that, is that mental health? I don't know.
Mental health is not recreation.
Not recreation, it's not fun.
Recreation can be mental health, though.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
That's true.
I think educational opportunities for trades.
That needs to be separate.
Yeah.
And the health center needs to be separate too, because that's talking about. That's talking, I think that's talking about physical wellness. Right, there we go.
That's for good, yeah.
Yeah, the thing that concerns me, well, I, I understand there's a decent-sized, uh. Excuse me. A homeless population of, of farm workers in the area there. And I'm, you know, wondering how they get access to. Lots of, to services.
Do we need a homeless facility here?
Well, you know, apparently there is, um. A decent-sized population of, of farm workers that are unhoused there.
Hey, can we take out sports fields under community facilities, because we have soccer fields, I mean, it's repeated, I don't know.
Fields.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Fields.
Or sports fields instead of soccer.
Sports fields.
Yeah.
Or that's inclusive.
Um, I feel like we have educational twice, I, I like that we're calling out educational opportunities for the trade. Um, I feel like we have educational twice, I I like that we're calling out educational opportunities for the trades, but our first thing is.
Oh, yeah, take out the bottom one, yeah, take out the bottom, sorry, thank you.
You know, instead of.
Hannah and then Avram?
Could you remove the comma after performing arts theater, it's the end of the, unless you want to put something else after it, that was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Avram?
Yeah, uh, yoga and other classes, I I think we need to develop something that says both yoga and and other kinds of.
You just say.
Physical activity classes, I.
You just say fitness, I think that's what people.
Yeah, fitness, I like that.
Yeah. Fitness classes?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Can we, can we, can I read this and we can? Okay. Community services and facilities that the development provide the following community services at the new SDC. Education, employment, training facilities, community facilities that include a plaza, community hall, park, and performing arts theater. Recreation, swimming pools. Sports field, fitness classes, mental health outreach, or crisis center for youth and adults, community health center.
Yeah.
I motion approved.
Hannah.
I get that.
Ray, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, any abstent, any knows? Alrighty, okay, we're down to the last two. What do y'all want to do about this?
Well, it seems like it is near the front, uh, near the top of the letter.
I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we need it at all.
The fire part?
Hi.
Okay, is there, is there?
We talked about that, we talked about fire access, we talked about those things, I think they understand fire is important.
Okay, who's getting a motion to remove?
I make a motion to remove fire safety.
Avram, is there a second?
I'll second.
Hannah, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Okay, remove it, please.
The only thing on funding would be if if we want to include under the part where we mentioned funding. That uh, we we lobby for state funds for low income housing.
I mean, there could be, is there any other funds for like, I mean, what what's, what's, what's um. What is trending right now in in state funding? Is it equity, is it, uh, where are, where are our funds at, I mean, if we have a target sentence. Toward, towards some of that in addition to our infrastructure funding? Cause before we talk about infrastructure. Maybe to help, you know, uh, to help, to help uh, developers, uh, I I don't know, um. Creative funding from all of our, we would like creative funding from all of our, our, our state and um. Local government entities to fulfill this. Um, this, this critical housing um, need that we have in our valley.
You know, we could mention project, is it called Project Room Key? That's a project that Newsom's been really. Uh, promoting, and I think that uh, Annie Philander's project just got four hundred thousand dollars from them. Is it room key or home key, I forget if it's home key or room key. That is specifically around homeless, you know, housing people who were previously unsheltered. But if we're talking about helping people who are, have that need, I think it's something we could look into applying for.
Yeah, it's home key, I mean, you could, you could give that as a, as an example, I mean, you know, we would like creative funding from all our local and state.
State representatives who are supposed.
I don't, I don't, I I really don't think we need to state what it's from, I think we just need to state generally. What we're looking for, because we don't know all the things that are available.
Yeah, we'd like them to be creative and and go out there and 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 find, you know.
I I I don't think to to precisely name something, I, I think what we're doing is offering. Uh, strategies and it's up to our great county to. Get it done. Get her done.
That's.
Okay, so.
Take it, take away the green and take away the project home key and.
I would like to see it as, as explore creative funding. Rather than we would like, which. You know.
We would like creative.
Yeah, period, it's period, start with explore creative funding from all our local and state representatives.
We can also say national too.
National, federal.
Or federal, excuse me.
All levels of government funding. Uh, government.
Of government.
Federal, federal is the, the federal government. And just government is all of it. All levels of. Government funding.
No, not federal, take out federal.
Federal is specific type.
You got it, Karina, you're almost there.
You guys are killing me here.
You're doing a great job, Karina, this is really looking great, thank you for all your work.
Oh, gosh, who would have ever thought those typing classes would pay off, right?
Really?
Yeah, really. And and Karina gets a double when she goes to Stivers.
Someday, y'all, someday.
Someday.
I also want to acknowledge our interpreter, he's doing a fabulous job, thank you, Juan, gracias, Juan.
Okay, is that all we're gonna say about funding?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, we mentioned funding earlier, so I don't know if we want to try and meld that back up.
We, we talked about the infrastructure specifically, we want them also to, to explore whatever else they got.
Yep. Get it together, guys.
Yep. Okay. Can we vote on this last explore creative funding from all levels of government, can I get a motion to approve?
A motion to approve that, I'll second it.
Okay, Iris and Ray, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
I have something.
What would you like to, okay, Jesus.
So when you say explore creative funding from all levels of government, are we just? Only. Like, look, I'm thinking about level of government, like government, can we think about like maybe non-governmental organizations?
That's, that's government and 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 NGOs.
Or like.
Yep.
Or.
Non-government. Say it again, Jesus, I'm sorry.
Yes. Thinking of some like organizations that. Are for mostly they are, are non-governmental organizations that. Thinking of. Organizations are specifically um, out there that I'm sure there are.
Yeah.
To support this kind of um, projects.
Yeah, Jesus, Jesus, you bring up a really good point, because um, in Silicon Valley. Uh, many of the tech companies have gone together and I think put together a hundred and fifty million or two hundred million dollars. For affordable housing.
Okay, so put non-government agencies or non-government organizations.
Should we spell it out? Yeah, spell it out.
Um, on government organizations, yeah, okay, so I'm gonna read it again. Explore creative funding from all levels of government and non-government organizations, can I get a motion?
I'll second Iris's motion.
Alright, Iris and Ray, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, no opposing, alright, um, these suggestions were developed based on information provided by the Springs Municipal Advisory Council members. Sonoma Valley Housing Group and the commu- and community members. Any other way you want to close this? Thank you for your time, thank you for consider, well, thank you for, do we want to say thank you?
Oh, yeah, what the heck?
Thank you for your consideration.
There you go.
Beautiful.
Okay, now. I'm gonna read it. And then we have one other thing still at the top, there's two things we still need to do, or three, we need to sit, who are we gonna give this to? Who do we want CC'd?
Oh.
What about higher government, like our, our state representatives?
Yeah, Mike McCarthy, Mike McCarthy.
Mike Thompson.
Mike Thompson.
And uh, Ag- Curry Aguilar.
The board of supervisors.
Oh, I had it reversed.
Yeah, yeah.
What, doesn't she have a first name? What's, what's her first name?
Isn't it Cecilia?
Cecilia, it is Cecilia.
Governor Newsom.
Yeah, governor, get him, get him.
Okay, and?
I think you should probably CC Susan Gorman.
Yeah, the whole board of supervisors.
Well, board of supervisors.
Is it Mike, is it Mike McGuire or Bill Dodd for this area?
Well, the, it, Bill Dodd has some area of Sonoma, but most of it is Mike McCarthy. I mean, we could do Bill, I'm happy to do Bill Dodd.
It's not Mike McCarthy.
What is it? Kevin, Kevin?
Mike McGuire.
McGuire. I don't know.
Send it to Mike McGuire and Bill Dodd.
Yeah.
Send it to everybody.
Uh, what about Dianne Feinstein and Padilla?
Yep, get them in there. Who's our other representative?
It was their former attorney general.
Mike, Mike Thompson is the, is the um.
Isn't it?
U S, a U S representative, you're talking about the top level of government.
No, you're talking, the other senator is.
We've got Mike Thompson.
It's Padilla.
Yeah, Padilla, yeah. Alex Padilla.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and Feinstein.
This is a good quiz in civics, y'all.
It sure is.
Yeah. And then, uh.
Yeah, you got McGuire, you got.
Okay.
Alright.
Do we want to send it to the North Valley Mac?
Yes.
Sure.
Sure.
Yes.
And the CC, what is it, the?
We want it published in the IT and the press Democrat.
Alright, what about? Any local nonprofits?
Generation Housing?
Cut.
I don't know, just a thought.
What about? What about Sonoma City Council?
Oh, yes, Sonoma City Council.
Good point.
And Alex Padilla, that is the other uh, state, uh, federal center.
Yes.
Thank you.
What about Luther Burbank Housing in Mid-Pad?
Okay, Adam.
I, they should be interested.
We gotta do it now, otherwise we're not gonna be able to do it later.
Right.
Hannah, who was the other entity you mentioned?
Mid-Pen Housing. They built.
Sorry, yeah, perfect. Yep.
It's an abbreviation, I think.
Okay, anyone else? Do we know the titles for Cecilia Curry?
I will add all those titles.
Okay.
I just don't want to waste everybody's time.
Alright, thank you.
No, we'll just waste yours, right?
Anybut, anything else, anybody else that you can think of? Okay, alright, let's go back up to the top.
How about this Sonoma um, County Community Development Commission?
Okay.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
It should, no, yeah, definitely, this should go to the um, uh, the planning department.
Well, the citizens. The Citizens Advisory Council.
It's, it's, yeah, it should go to permit, we should probably put in permits, and I'm like, we, yeah, we have.
Yeah, definitely. I just couldn't remember who they were.
Formerly PRND.
Yeah, PRND.
Formerly.
Okay.
And it's permit Sonoma now.
Yep.
You can send it to the Sonoma Index Tribune.
Yeah, the press Democrat.
Okay. Alright, let's go up.
Send it to the sun too.
Let's go up and finish that last sentence. Or that last. Where we left highlighted in yellow? I don't remember why we did that.
Was because of the agreement. We are in agreement.
Oh. So, th- that, thank you, Avram, so do we want to note that? Avram, do you want us to note here that you're not in agreement with the affordable housing statement?
Well, uh, we, I, we could do it, there are two ways to do it, as I see it. Um, there are some commonalities. Some commonalities, I think you'd have to put. Are there's, are you saying among state ho- whole stakeholders, are you talking about everybody in the Springs?
No, I, yes, I was talk, yes, but this is, but I think we need to rework this to be us.
Can we just delete it? We've, uh, we resolved our, most of our agreements, we only had one abstention. I guess that, so Avram, if you want to have a minority vote, then here it would be.
Yeah, I, I mean, the only, you know, there are only two ways for me. Uh, to deal with it, one is um. Either make it as an exception. Meaning I agree to the others, or I just vote nay on the whole thing, I mean, those are.
Okay, what would you like to do?
Uh, you know, to be honest, I can do either, it's.
Well, I think.
Like feed, feedback, because I'm in agreement with the other things, I'm just not in agreement. Of that statement, but at the same time. I I don't think, we don't have to put agreement.
Did we just put?
Here's what.
The majority agreed, uh, there was, there, we don't know that it's a majority either. But we could say that the majority agreed that there should be more housing and the minority uh, uh, disagreed.
Yeah, you know, we can do, because everything is public record on this. And and we don't, I I don't want to carve out one thing, I think what we can do is, uh, we've heard a variety of interest regarding. The development, um, some are competing and some are complimentary. Uh, there are some commonalities and agreements among the stakeholders, uh. That we represent and just leave it at that, because if the whole thing. Um. If, if the whole thing, if the majority of the council votes yes, I mean, I can do just my nay and that's it. They don't even know about it, you know, I mean, in the letter, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah. Okay, alright, if that's what you're comfortable with, that's, that works, alright, why don't you take out, and we are in agreement on the following areas? Okay, and then they can un-highlight it and I'll read it and we'll agree on it.
Shouldn't it be a poll in there?
Where?
At the end of the sentence, these are some commonalities and agreements among the state stakeholders that we represent.
Oh, a colon, okay. So as.
Or, I guess you could say following are. Right?
The following. Yeah, the following, yeah, the following are, okay, and then put a colon at the end of represent.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. We have heard the variety of interests regarding the SDC develop, the development of SDC. Some are competing and others are complimentary, the following are some commonalities and agreements among the stakeholders that we represent. Can I get a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Take on it.
Hannah, Jesus, all in favor? We need.
Hi.
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 Any? Nays? No, okay, now we need to vote on the entire letter. Now. We can read silently to ourselves. Or I can read it aloud again to everyone. What is your preference?
Will you read it aloud to us, please?
Yeah, well, I do, you know, I did teach first grade for a really long time, so I could, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Alright, I don't have a picture book to go along with it or anything, but. I'll try to, I'll try to, I'll try to use my teacher voice, what's.
Make the pictures in your head of houses and, and happy wildlife and.
Perfect, envision what you think.
Bicycles going through.
Yeah, envision what you think this will look like. Alright, here we go. Dear. Dear Sonoma County Board of Supervisors, the Springs Municipal Advisory Council approved on January 12th, 2020, the following recommendations for the future use of the Sonoma, Sonoma Developmental Center in Eldridge, California. We want to urge the Board of Supervisors to consider a fourth alternative that is inclusive of the ideas and vision of our Sonoma Valley community. The information provided by local organizations was not incorporated into the plans. There needs to be an effort to outreach to Latinx, low-income elder communities, renters, disabled, and other disenfranchised populations. Locally gathered information will be useful in addressing the recent press, recent pressing and ongoing concerns, not exclusive of, but including drought and fire. As a guiding principle, we urge the Board of Supervisors to require local knowledge and experience in formulating a fourth option. We acknowledge that during a global pandemic, outreach can be challenging, and for that reason alone, we request adequate time, up to a two-year period to find another alternative. In addition, we urge the Board of Supervisors to lobby the state of California to financially support the remediation and repair of the SDC campus. We have heard a variety of interests regarding the development of SDC, some are competing and others are complementary. The following are some commonalities and agreements among the stakeholders that we represent. Affordable housing. That any future SDC housing development be affordable, either owner-occupied or long-term rental units. Our recommendation is that the housing be for people who work and/or live in Sonoma Valley. The development should be a phased project incorporating multiple developers, and should periodically evaluate the impact of fire, roads, climate, equity, and infrastructure.
Hang on.
Go.
That you, you read of, and should it be, should it be of instead of to, huh, get to vote again?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, though. Road access and transportation. Consider to evaluate a second access to Highway 12 from the east side of SDC campus for emergency egress with a possibility of a permanent thoroughfare if modeling agrees. Provide that said road should, said road not have an impact on the wildlife corridor. Any plan should include class four bike lanes, bike lane or lane, bike lane through the existing SDC and it, and the new egress road. Vegetation, wildlife preservation, can you take, okay, never mind. Maintain the rural nature of our valley, develop and plan to maintain the wildlife corridor while preserving in perpetuity the currently undeveloped nature, nature lands of the site, natural lines of the site. Community service and facilities, the development provide the following community services at the new SDC. Education and employment training facilities, community facilities that include a plaza, community hall, park, and a performing arts theater. Recreation, swimming pools, sports fields, fitness classes, mental health outreach, or crisis center for youth and adults, a community health center. Funding, explore creative funding from all levels of government and non-government organizations. These suggestions were developed based on the info, based on information provided by the Springs Municipal Advisory Council members, Sonoma Valley Housing Group, and community members. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, my Taituri, Chair of the Springs Municipal Advisory Council, CC Congressman Mike Thompson, Cecilia Aguiar, Aguiar Curry, Governor Gavin Newsom, Mike McGuire, Bill Todd, Bill Dodd, Diane Feinstein, Alex Padilla, North Sonoma Valley Municipal Advisory Council, Generation Housing, Sonoma City Council, Luther Burbank Housing, Midbin Housing, Sonoma Community Development Commission, Sonoma County Permit Sonoma, Sonoma Valley, I'm not sure what's, SVCAC, Sonoma Index Tribune, Press Democrat, and the Sonoma Sun.
I, you know, there's one other, uh, developer besides Mid-Pen, and that was the, is it, uh, does anybody remember the developer of the, um, project in the city of Sonoma? Across from Train Town?
Oh yeah, I know which one you're talking about.
They did a fabulous job. I mean, phenomenal job in terms of design, much better than Mid-Pen. Mid-Pen has no creativity at all, but.
Can we, um, can we, Karina, can we approve this if we find, without knowing the name of that?
Assistant Saha or something?
Yes, you're right, yeah.
Oh, thank you, Jesus.
Beautiful.
Hey, yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote. Is there a motion to approve this letter?
I will make a motion to approve this letter.
Right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Hannah, seconds? All in favor?
Uh, can I ask a question before of the chair? Can I do a vote that says, I approve every section but affordable housing? Or do I have to go one way or the other?
Uh, I will defer to Karina.
You can vote, um, either yea or nay, and you can express your sentiment.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Because it'll be public record, because Lynn Marie is gonna, thank you, okay, so I'm gonna call for a vote. I'm gonna, I'm gonna roll call this vote. So I'm making sure I'm hearing everybody. Vice Chair Willette.
Aye.
Hannah Parrot, Parrot?
Aye.
Avram Goldman?
Uh, may with the provision that I'm in agreement with everything except the affordable housing section, and that is concerning the number of units be limited to a certain amount, less than what has previously been uh, stated in the three alternative plans.
Thank you, Jesus.
Aye.
Council. Oh wait, who did, where did I, I got lost, Councilmember Alcaraz, Councilmember Lombard.
Aye.
Uh, Chair Ituri, aye.
Good job.
I think it was really a good letter in the end, yeah, it was a good job.
I think you guys did an amazing job, I really do, I got, I, I'd hug you all if I could, if it weren't COVID. Anyway.
Yeah, really.
Karina, do we need to do anything else at this point?
At this point, you have done everything you need to do on my end, um, I will just make sure that I add the titles on the government officials, send to Chair Ituri for her signature. Once I receive her signature, I will make the, um, letter available to the public and to this council.
Thank you, Karina, thank you for.
And of course, I will, sorry, last step is I will of course send to the Board of Supervisors.
All right, are there any final comments from council?
I have a question.
Yep.
Uh, so as soon as Karina gets it back to us, I'm going to share this with, on the Springs Facebook page, is that okay?
Yes, once it's in the public, um, record, it's available for anyone to use.
Does it need to go to the Board of Supervisors before it goes on the Facebook page?
Um, most likely it will go to the Board of Supervisors, you know, tonight, if not tomorrow morning, depending on how late we're here tonight. So sometime tomorrow afternoon, you should be able to post it on the, um, Springs page.
Can you make that explicit in the email, I just don't want things to go out, I mean, I know that we just did this publicly, but I just want, I just like the communication to be.
Well, don't send us a final until it's okay.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, yes, okay. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Thank you to Karina and, and Lynn Marie and Juan.
Yes.
I did, I did owe that, and, um, thank you Chair Ituri for, um, doing a marvelous job of working with all of us.
Avram, it is an absolute pleasure, you really have no idea, it just make, I, I love this kind of stuff, and I'm just very, very fortunate and blessed to be able to serve, so thank you. Thank you all.
And good job, um, Hannah, calling in from wherever you are.
Yeah, really.
Thank you.
That was prodigious.
All right, y'all.
Oh, lucky you.
Karina, we won't see you in February, we'll see you in March?
Um, that is correct, I have some planned time off, um, I frankly, with Omicron and, you know, everything happening, I think I may cancel those plans. So you may potentially see me, but as of now, I will be out in February.
Okay, all right, everybody stay safe out there.
Adjournment, adjournment.
Oh, can I get a mo, thanks Lynn Marie, can I get a motion to, I've never had so many motions, this, I mean, it's.
A lot of motion, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ray, is there a second?
I second that.
Jesus, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, y'all, be safe out there, adore you. Thank you, bye to our audience, thank you.
Great job.